I was thinking we could start and then just sort of go around each question. Perhaps presuming, but would you like to start, Ms. Young?
And we're not going to keep going? Are you done?
We're finished.
Probably should clap for the three years of effort it took while going through a global pandemic and everything that that entailed. But honestly, just very glad to be here tonight with everybody actually doing this thing that we've all been talking about and thinking about and looking forward to or dreading or both at the same time for three years. So Ms. Young? Now we can go to Mr. Youngman, Dr. Jones, Ms. Walsh.
And just for logistics, is it a number of questions? Is it a time? Is it?
I would say we just go question at a time.
Okay.
And that way we have 45 minutes for questions. So we can make sure that everybody has an opportunity.
You mentioned this in your presentation, I think you did, Ms. Gown, that the, this general plan doesn't differ that substantially from the 2030. Can you just give us an idea of how it does differ? What are some of the major? That's a big question, I'm sorry. This is your test. You have one week left. And we want to see how, we want to see how well you can do in your last week. Yeah, so, but any idea at all other than me having to go through the entire 2030 plan?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, first of all, it's 750 pages. And Plan Howard 2030 was a fraction. I don't, I mean, 200. So, I mean, and that's kind of where the whole, I mean, we really tried to be more specific than Plan Howard 2030. What I think we've struggled with is the general nature of Plan Howard 2030 and kind of the lack of guidance when we've had to evaluate projects. Like when projects come in, we had to evaluate it from a land, you know, a general plan perspective, consistency with the general plan. It was wide open. So we were really focused on trying to, you know, take some of the ideas that were in there that were, you know, still relevant to the county because we are still a maturing county, right? More mature than we were 10 years ago. But a lot of the planning principles are the same. And so we were trying to really put more specificity around, around Plan Howard 2030. I think that's overall, one of the biggest components, I will say, in terms of many of the activity centers, and we'll get a little into this at the next session, but we had, from the land use map perspective, we had these growth and revitalization areas. And they were these large swaths of, you know, the entire Route 1 corridor was a growth and revitalization area, for instance. And then Hoco by Design really hones in on very specific, discrete areas that we're identifying for growth or redevelopment. So taking the entirety of the Route 1 corridor and then directing growth into like three discrete areas and identifying those. Same with areas on Route 40. And then we also have identified some additional areas, some new areas along Snowden River, the Snowden-Dobbin area, Long Gate Shopping Center, and area around Meadow Ridge. Feel free to jump in and add.
Yeah, and I just want to add a couple other things. Another key difference, I think, between this and Plan Howard 2030 is the emphasis on equity. And that is also a bit of a becoming a national trend, a national best practice, something that many jurisdictions are trying to understand and address through their general plans. And then I think, and then also bringing in this diverse housing types. Again, also a bit of a national trend that many jurisdictions are contemplating and discussing for how they can incorporate those aspects into a general plan. So I think those are two other aspects.
So this is my one follow-up question and then it'll move on to Mr. Youngman. But the diverse housing types, the concept, the words, missing middle are repeated everywhere. And I'm curious if when you talk about missing middle housing and equity, are you talking about it from the perspective that those triplex units or those duplex units or the other types of missing middle housing that are being contemplated would be owned? Or would it just be more rentals?
Well, I think at this point it would be hard to say, and it probably depends on the housing type. Some, in some other areas where they have, say, these quadplexes, sometimes they are condo ownership sort of situation, cottage clusters, sometimes those are a condo ownership sort of situation. So I think it will just really depend on the, you know, it will vary on a case-by-case basis. And I don't know if you want me to see if Matt would like to speak to what he's familiar with in terms of nationally and how that has been working in some other jurisdictions, but I think it varies.
That would be fine to have Matt speak about that. I'm just wondering again through that equity lens, whether or not this was contemplated as a way to get in on the first floor to build generational wealth? And if that was an equity consideration in discussing the whole missing middle housing aspect?
Yeah, so specifically how missing middle is tied to equity, so I'm going to go back to the best practices that have been published by the American Planning Association. And that is specifically one of their recommendations or best practices in general to encourage and create more diverse housing types. So that way there can just be more housing types available at a multiple, multitude of price points. So certainly, I understand what you're saying, building generational wealth and homeownership is one really key step, right? A first step for individuals. But I think it just, I don't have the direct answer for you whether or not all missing middle housing types will create opportunities for homeownership, but I absolutely think that some do. Matt, did you have anything to add?
If Matt wants to add more, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Just kind of let me know when you want me to speak, because I don't want to speak over anybody, frankly. So yeah, speaking nationally, you know, the Missing Middle Housing Initiative is gaining steam. There's a couple of different ways it gets implemented. One way is when you build a new neighborhood, it's already kind of there. And so there's almost like a self-selection process to move into a community that has a lot of different housing types. Another way to do it is to retrofit in existing neighborhoods, and we've talked a little bit about that as well. When you do either approach, they could be rental or homeownership. And the key here is that a lot of times if you have, the theory at least, is if you have a smaller unit, you might be able to purchase a flat. So if it's a triplex, you purchase a flat, one of the three levels, and then you're in. That's your first homeownership opportunity. And the thought is that it builds equity and then you, if you want to move on, you've created wealth for yourself. It's obviously a good goal to have. But as was mentioned, it's hard to require or mandate, whether they be rental or homeownership. We're seeing kind of a mixed bag that comes with that. And a lot of it depends on what the price points are of a single-family detached home. If, like in your community where that's a pretty high number, people do look for alternatives because they still want to be in your community. And so they will look at homeownership opportunities for that. And, you know, it's just kind of the market driven, but it is happening both ways. And there's balance in most of the communities we're working in.
So I guess this is more of a zoning question than, and that is if you're doing missing middle, what if, can you do something like, say, okay, you can only put a single-family detached home on this piece of land. But if you put in a triplex and make it a missing middle and allow then three people to get in on the ground floor, that we will be willing to change the zoning if you do something like that? Can we incentivize developers to do that type of thing?
I mean, yes, we absolutely can incentivize the creation of the housing typology through zoning. We can't really control the ownership regime through zoning, though.
All right, Mr. Youngman?
Just one quick observation, and I know we kind of decided to start with a few of these and then we're going to take a break for budget. So just food for thought when you're sort of regrouping. And maybe this is a question for Matt. You know, putting an ADU in a single-family detached house makes it very difficult to finance. You know, somebody wants to buy that home, wants to put FHA financing or something on it, you know, we're pulling stoves out of houses all the time because they can't have, they won't finance a house with two dwellings in it, right? What are you, what are you seeing nationally as far as, you know, Fannie Mae guidelines, FHA guidelines to more, to accommodate the ADUs more?
Matt, do you want to show them? Okay.
Yeah, and I will tell you about my experiences, but I will also recognize, you know, where my expertise stops in that I don't do finance packages and I'm not a real estate agent. So just have that in perspective, that I'm just sharing stories from where I work around the country. It can be a challenge depending on the type of loan or things you want to get. But I haven't found it nationally to be such a challenge that that's the reason people don't want to do them. And what's really interesting, to be honest and frank with everybody about ADUs, is nobody has done this study because a lot of times planners don't look backwards very well. They're always looking forwards. But there is a significant percentage of ADUs that actually never really make it on the rental market. And it's because that ADU becomes a, the office, right? It's the office that you can at least walk 20 feet away from your primary home. It becomes the care center for an aging parent or a young child who comes back from college and needs a place to be while they get their feet underneath them. So in a lot of ways, the ADU is really still a family unit as you go through, go through with it. And then I would have to defer to Maryland law. I know in some of the places I'm working, like in North Carolina, for example, they just legislated out that if it's a caregiver unit, you can't comment on how many kitchens they have, for example. So I think that the legislation, both at the state level as well as local, is going to catch up with the ADU craze if there are hurdles right now.
Yeah, I mean, that might be the case, but, you know, your normal mortgage programs that we've all used to buy houses are all federal law, not state. So, you know, at some point. Because a single-family detached is a single-family detached and they, you know, you don't want to, they don't want to be lending on a property that's got this second dwelling in it. And I mean, people do it all the time, but, you know, before the appraiser comes in, we're running in, taking a range out and capping gas lines, and I'm sure people put them back in. It's just, it's crazy. But it's just as part of this big ADU discussion, nobody's thinking, okay, after that initial purchase to, you know, the client in five years, when they want to sell their house, you know, are they going to be able to sell it? Or is somebody going to be able to buy it? Do you guys have a sense of what the level of engagement was last time, 10 years ago? I think, because you've, I mean, bent over backwards to the point where I can't imagine you can stand up anymore to get 2,800 people to engage in this process, which is frightening that so few people really are paying attention.
I don't, I mean, I don't think we have the statistics on hand unless Kate does, but...
Bless you.
I don't have statistics, but just looking through files, it looked like the process was probably more like a year, maybe a handful of workshops with the community. So, you know, not like the extensive effort that we've done this time around.
I mean, the length of time speaks to the amount of engagement. It's a direct correlation. We can write a plan pretty quickly. It's the going back to the community through various iterations over time that, you know, leads to a three-year planning effort.
Yeah.
But if you wanted, we could certainly get you information.
No, I don't know that. I don't want to create any more work, but, you know, again, all that effort has yielded 0.7% of the population of Howard County has engaged in this. Now, when you want to build something next to their house, they'll all be engaged. And that's what we have to deal with every day. So I was just wondering if more people engaged this time than last time? But it's more of a curiosity. Don't, don't spend a lot of time to get that answer. I don't have any more comments on the questions on the introduction.
Dr. Jones?
Good evening and thank you so much for all your hard work. I just have one question for the introduction, that is. And it is on the graph on page 12. It was the Howard County Racial and Ethnic Composition. I saw there was a comparison between the years 2010 and 2019, but I wasn't sure how to truly compare the two bars because I wasn't sure of the population in 2010 versus 2019. That would be cool to, you know, see side by side, like, was there, you know, for an increase, for instance, you know, if, for instance, the green boxes, the green bars went from 3.1% to 3.5%, but what was like the per capita because of how many people there were in 2010 versus 2019? So that would be interesting to look at. That was it. But other than that, I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Ms. Walsh?
I have three requests, I guess, that I, they're not questions really, that I'll rattle off full quickly. Are we going to get a more specific version of that future land use map, which I will never, however many meetings we've ever have, call a flume? Because, just like you said, it's very targeted. And so it is more significant where that line is between the person who doesn't care and the person who does, that there, this particular color in that flume. So ideally, we'd have that before our next session. A second issue I had, as I kind of poured through, was in some cases we do cite source and in some cases we don't. And I think when you cite to the source of the information, you should include not only where it's from, but what date. So, for example, 2007 Forest Canopy data, I don't think is appropriate to use for a planning visionary document that goes to 10 years from now or more. And that was the one that caught my eye for reasons you might expect, but I, you know, I don't know if there are others, and there are certainly cases where I didn't know where the information came from at all. And then the third thing was, can we have these presentations that you're making beforehand so we can make notations to them? Okay. Those were my comments. My question goes to this notion of engagement. And the two areas of concern, there are probably more, but the two biggest areas of concern I have is engagement along Route 1 and engagement of tenants. I think tenants make up 25% or a third of our population. And when I look at that DEI summary that you referred to in the presentation, you talk to landlords, but not tenants. Route 1, you're going back to a 2018, one year or whatever, just like you said, you get less engagement, the shorter the period is. But there are a lot more people who live there now than in 2018. And that means that their input wasn't included. I've gone to Route 1, not Route 1, but Elkridge meetings. I'm really concerned that once again, we are leaving that community out. So if you could talk to how you know you have tenants engagement reflected in here and that you know that you have Route 1, but particularly Elkridge reflected in here, that would make me much more calm.
All right, well, I'll start. So with regards to engagement on Route 1, so we did certainly throughout the process reach out to different, so I'm going to wrap this into the community-based, to the DEI efforts. So we certainly did reach out to a lot of community-based organizations, many of whom do serve residents in the Route 1 corridor. So not only did we talk to property owners, but we talked to, like, nonprofits who serve a lot of residents who live in some of these under, some of these other areas. So sometimes it's very difficult to bring renters to the table, or especially just anybody who might have more than one job. So trying to find the time to come and participate in a focus group can be very challenging. So we thought the second best way to engage those people and hear what their needs were were to partner with some nonprofit organizations who serve them, such as, we worked with, had a focus group with Just Living Advocacy. We also talked to the Community Action Council. And then there were, I think, were a couple of other nonprofits who we mentioned in that, in our DEI engagement summary. So that's one of the ways that we tried to hear from renters. We absolutely did try to reach out to other apartment property owners, property managers, and say, can we get a meeting together? Can we invite renters to the meetings? But sometimes they didn't always pan out. So I do think a lot of those attendees, though, even though they weren't officially coming to the table saying, I'm a renter, many of them were still renters. We also had a focus group with people who were being served by Luminous, so Hispanic-Latino population. We didn't ask if they were renters or homeowners, but I think we can assume that a good number of the people who participated in some of those focus groups were renters. With regards to Route 1, I know you said that, so we did do a good bit of engagement in 2018. However, throughout the planning process, because there were still topics that covered that related to Route 1 within each of the chapters, I know that there were still community members from the Route 1 corridor who did attend some of our planning-themed chapter meetings where we talked, for example, in the Economic Prosperity chapter, we do talk about Route 1 in there. So they were still, we still talked about Route 1 as a part of all of this engagement. And they were, everyone still was invited to attend some of these meetings. So we did do some feedback that way, just as a part of the general Hoco by Design process.
Are there specific instances, though, that you can point to that was, we were going in a, in a particular way, but because of these comments, we changed the plan? Like, as you're going through the more specific topics in the meetings that come, will you be saying, you know, we heard from Elkridge residents and they want X, Y, and Z, and that's reflected here on page 36?
So there's a 30-page matrix. I don't know if you have it. If you don't, we're happy to provide it. It is on our website where we identify the feedback that we heard and all the changes that we made in the plan. We don't attribute the feedback to any one specific person or group, but we do. And some of the feedback was, you know, we heard, you know, from multiple people, similar types of comments. And so we summarize what we heard and then the changes that we made, the respective changes that we made in the plan.
Okay. All right, no, I haven't seen the matrix. I'll go look at it.
Is it under Resources on the Hoco by Design website or is it a more internal document?
It's on the Hoco by Design website. It's on the right-hand side over, yeah, I think it's under Resources.
Yeah. Related resources.
Related resources. And I think we did send all these materials over to...
I'm wrong. Community feedback.
Oh.
Summary table of draft revisions.
Chair Rigby, that's, I did send that out, I believe, earlier to, earlier today. We identified that on the website and we did not have it in our original documentation, but we did send it out through email earlier today.
Thank you.
And I guess I would just add one thing with, with Route 1. I mean, the Route 1 master planning effort, we went out to the community, we had these, we had six potential opportunity areas that we talked to the community about. We basically boiled that down to three in Hoco by Design. So there, you know, that was based on some of the feedback that we did hear. And then it was also, really, a lot of it was based on the modeling that we were able to do during Hoco by Design and some of the more detailed analysis.
And just to jump in a little bit more about representation from Route 1. So we certainly had some members of our Planning Advisory Committee member who were quite focused on Route 1 and providing feedback and comments on a lot of the elements of the future land use map and other, and other topics that affect Route 1. So, so I think that there was, there was still absolutely representation, or members of the public who represented that corridor, who participated in the process.
Yeah, we actually made changes to the flume from that particular PAC member. And we have, we're prepared to show that. It's in our presentation next week, but we actually show the changes that we made to the flume in response to that feedback.
Who was that PAC member?
Kathy Hudson.
Oh, from Elk. Perfect.
Do we have a separate Route 1 work session?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to say, I have to check the, there's a whole table of sessions I can tell you offhand, but yeah. I, my sort of broader question was if you could talk about how the various plans that we have as a county were incorporated into the report? We have the Housing Opportunities Master Plan, Walk Howard, Bike Howard, Land Preservation Parks and Rec, the Climate Action Resiliency Plan. I know that they're indexed in the, one of the appendices, but if you could talk about how, sort of that qualitative piece of how they were integrated within the plan, that would be very helpful to understand.
Sure, I'll take the first crack at the response. So it sort of depends on the plan, but most of them were really sort of brought to the table by a lot of our technical assistance group members. So those were the other members of county government who were a part of reviewing the plan and the draft and contributing to a lot of the policies and actions to ensure that they're either, A, consistent with the plans that are currently in place, or they're giving clear guidance for future updates to those plans when those updates are due once Hoco by Design is adopted. So for example, the Housing Opportunities Master Plan, a good number of the land use recommendations that were found in the Housing Opportunities Master Plan were incorporated into Hoco by Design. Walk Howard and Bike Howard, a lot of that was used as the basis for the, was certainly incorporated into the County in Motion Chapter. And then while the Climate Action Plan, I know that is sort of in the process of being drafted, so there was certainly a lot of coordination between us and them as we were developing our respective plans. And also LPPRP, the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, that was also, those efforts were coordinated as well to ensure that there was some consistency between the two. So with, as soon as we learned about a planning process, generally I get a phone call. I say, we got to make sure this is coordinated with Hoco by Design. I'm like, yes, yes, we do. So there was just a lot of collaboration amongst all of the staff.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
And this is just the introduction we're talking about tonight, right?
Yes, this is just the introduction chapter for this evening's discussion.
So when I ask some questions on any other chapters?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It should be overarching and things contained in the introduction.
He's like, I'm watching the clock already.
Okay, I'm going to ask you all what this statement means. On page one, it says that Hoco by Design presents, quote, "predictability that informs future land uses with greater detail and specificity and guides budget priorities to align decisions for a shared understanding of direction and sequencing." Thank you, Mary, for that smile. I appreciate that. Okay. What does that mean? That's, that's a lot. And I, I'm, I thought, okay, maybe I could take that sentence apart and ask a question about each part of that sentence. Predictability that informs future land uses with greater detail and specificity. So this, for example, let's go back to missing middle, okay? Because I, I know that, you know that I want to talk about that. Does this say anywhere in this general plan, here's where we should put missing middle housing? Here's where we should put XYZ housing? Here's the land that's left that is developable for single-family detached homes? I guess I'm looking for, what do you, just that first part of the sentence, what do you mean by specificity? We'll start with that part of the sentence.
Yeah, so I, and I kind of spoke to a little bit earlier in that the future land use map, we went from four just very broad land use categories of rural west, established communities, growth and revitalization areas. And we now have 18 character areas, each one with details. And that's all you'll see in, again, we'll be talking about this at the next meeting. We're going to go through each of them. But they all have details about what, whether or not we are intending to preserve, enhance, transform, or strengthen that particular character area. And so it's that more, that, that's the level of specificity in kind of looking at these, these discrete areas and identifying character elements of what we want, the type of character that we want to see in that area moving forward, right? At a... At a much more focused level. It's also, again, taking a much more focused and targeted look at our activity centers and the locations of those. And that's really what allows us to plan more appropriately or adequately for infrastructure, right? If we have more specificity about where we're targeting growth, then we know where we need to add infrastructure to accommodate that. And that's kind of getting to the level of understanding from a budgetary perspective of where we need to make investment moving forward. It allows us to know, you know, what the water and sewer demands are gonna be in those areas, where, how the schools are gonna be impacted, et cetera. So it's, that's basically less from a policy perspective, but more from like this, the flume and the character area perspective.
Is, so I'm looking at the Future Land Use Map. Are those, are the character areas reflected? Oh, sorry. Are the character areas reflected on the Future Land Use Map? That's what the colors are.
Yes.
That's what, that's, those are called the character areas. Okay?
Yes. So each character area has a description, and then we talk about what, you know, like the massing should look like, what the, you know, land form should look like, and it goes into, you know, at least a page-long description of each character area in Appendix B?
So since one of the character areas is our village activity centers, and so far, I guess it's one and one. Okay? Thank you. I know you know what we mean by that. So what, I guess I'm thinking, what was the thought process behind putting the nine villages as, the nine Columbia villages, as village activity centers, given the community response to those village activity centers?
Well, that's actually one area that didn't change much at all from the last general plan.
Well, that was another question I have.
Yeah, we actually kept the exact same, the exact same circles that were on Plan Howard 2030.
They were stars.
Stars.
They were stars.
That's right.
Twenty thirty.
Thank you.
Changed in the circles.
Are unchanged in this plan. So those village center locations and then the conceptual redevelopment for those village centers are, again, is consistent with what the county had been envisioning for those village centers. We did get a lot of positive feedback about the redevelopment concepts that we presented at the open houses for village center redevelopment. You have anything to add on the village centers?
Do you have details of those, from those, what you presented on the, or is what you presented contained in here? In the, is what you presented to the general public, is that all contained in here?
Right. The conceptual redevelopment scenarios for Newtown are in the Technical Appendix C in the focus areas. And then the feedback that we receive is summarized in the engagement summary.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Youngman?
I don't have any more questions on the intro.
All right, Ms. Walsh?
The, I think, I must have read it, in this part where we talk about there's only 2% of undevelopable land left in the county, where is that? What is that from?
How did we, how did we determine that number?
Yeah. And as of what date?
Oh, the Sarazon, we did the land use modeling as of 2023. She had to redo the whole model, so it was 2023, I believe.
Sarazon.
The land use model was, would have been updated in 2023. The original modeling was done in 2020, so that 2% applies in both cases.
Okay. What was that number in, in the last Plan Howard 2030 effort?
I, I don't know. I don't know that we actually had that number in Plan Howard 2030. We'd have to check on that.
Okay.
This is more for, I think, Matt Nuncaster. So you made a comment that sort of sparked an additional question, but you said, demand if you choose to accept it. So I guess my question is, what happens if you don't make that choice? Because previous generations have not made that choice in this county, and over the past few decades, it means that we've seen this, the limited supply of homes really push sale prices and assessments higher and higher, and it makes it very challenging for older people and young people starting out. So what, demand if you choose to accept it? What happens if we do nothing?
Yeah. It's a good question. So let me start out by just saying where that statement comes from is in the market study, which was one of the fiscal assessment reports. RC Elko had actually found that there were about 20,000 units from before that would love to have come to Howard County, but they could not, either because of your allocation tables, APFO, something going on, that there was demand for more housing in the county that was not being met by your supply or your policies. And so that continues into the future, and that's what I mean when I say if you choose to accept it. There is plenty of market that you could build and build and build, and you could go, you'd have to go up because of the 2% that we talked about, but you could build and build and build and get housing here. The question becomes, when you decide to policy constrain the housing, you start to get into conditions like Portland, Oregon, or other places that might use, well, or you with your planned servicer boundary. It's a wonderful thing what you did, safeguarding 39% of the land in a natural state. It basically almost cuts your county, though, you know, into 61% that's left, and so you're trying to put all that growth in the 61%, which makes it more urban. And so as part of that, when you make decisions to constrain, policy constrain, or through purchase constrain the amount of land area to build, the demand continues, and when demand is higher than supply, price tends to go up. You know, it's the old Economics 101, that graphic that we all learned way back in the day. But usually when you have less supply, prices go up as long as you're a desirable place to be.
If I can add to that? Thank you, Mary. Also, what we'll talk about when we get into the fiscal analysis, I think you'll see that generally, new development, new growth does generate slightly higher revenues than just annual property taxes and income taxes that the county generates because of additional fees. So that's another aspect to consider.
And a connection I had not made till just this very moment is that net-wise, we have 20,000 additional people commuting into Howard County every single day, and we are short 20,000 units. Go figure. Ms. Young?
I'm going back to the sentence. I only got the first part of it. So the next part of it is, "and guides budget priorities to align decisions for a shared understanding of direction and sequencing." So which budget priorities are we going to be aligning with this plan? And you know that my number one budget priority, when we talked about this very first time, is schools. And I didn't see a lot of, you know, there's a chapter here, but there wasn't actual planning or places where land is set aside, or how much money that would cost in the future to put schools in, should those 26,000 units yield 5,000 kids? What does that mean? Where, where, where in this plan are we discussing budgeting for more fire stations? For greater growth to our hospital? For more police stations? And then for more operating budget to ensure that there are, there's operating for all of those things?
Right. So the Supporting Infrastructure chapter does talk about all of those pieces, police and fire, hospitals. And schools obviously has its own chapter now, as a response to public opinion. And, and so, you know, obviously, we can't get into how much, you know, specifically we're gonna need to budget at this point in time, but the, the point of the general plan, though, is to be able to guide those agencies, those departments, in, as they're putting their budgets together, as they're doing their plans, right? So this is, it is almost like a planning exercise for other plans. So as, you know, it's police or fire, understanding where there's gonna be additional population, where they may need to put additional resources over the next 20 years. So as they're putting their budgets together and those budgets are going to the council for approval, that, that they understand where the priorities should be. Same with the schools. It helps them to understand more specifically where growth is gonna be targeted for their budgeting and their planning exercises.
Well, okay, so we're talking about specificity here, and I look at that big blob of red up at Gateway, which looks like the biggest blob of red, which, for those people who are watching and not looking at the Future Land Use Map, that big blob of red means that's where the most density is gonna go for, under this planning tool. So that clearly, with nine to 11,000 units, will require a school. And all it shows is the red. So when we're talking about specificity and budgeting, why wouldn't we carve out something in that space right now for a police substation? I don't know if we, I don't know if a fire station would be needed, given the number of fire stations in that area, and an elementary school.
So we actually did, there are, there is a policy in the Schools chapter that does call for the requisite public education facilities to be placed in Gateway. We don't know how many that's going to be at this point in time, but we are gonna do the master plan, which will help us, once we realize, you know, once we get through the master planning process and we have a phasing program, then we'll be able to better understand what the infrastructure demands of Gateway will be. And so that will come through the master planning process. And we did provide, I think, the level of specificity you're referring to in the Public School Facilities chapter, specific to Gateway. And we also added in, I'll just mention, similar levels of specificity per the recommendation of the Howard County Public School System planning staff, that schools' facilities should be considered as activity centers redeveloped.
As what?
As activity centers redeveloped.
All right. Dr. Johns? Ms. Walsh?
I know you said it twice, Director Gowan. Schools are to be considered as activity centers redeveloped. Is that what?
That's what the, I'm-
Okay.
Did you pull the policy up? Go for it.
I have it, yeah. So the, it's in chapter, the Schools chapter, but the action is to ensure coordination of Hoco by Design and the HCPSS Long Range Master Plan, so that school capacity projects are planned in activity center areas identified for transformation on the flume.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay.
So it's, it's found under Policy Statement 1.
Okay. Thanks. My question goes to redevelopment. Where does that come from? I can't read my notes. But this note, I mean, you, you reference Route One, and you also reference Route 40, but there seems to be this focus on this last 2% developable land and what we do with it and why we're in Gateway. But maybe you're just referring me to the right chapter to spend more time on before we get to that subject matter, but what kind of focus do we have on redeveloping quarters like Route 40 or Route One versus, you know, putting ADUs in or building an entirely new community at Gateway? How does that fit into the scheme here?
Yeah, I'll start. Feel free to jump in. I think that's the whole, I mean, that's the whole premise of the plan, and that we consider this to be a redevelopment plan. And so by identifying those discrete activity center locations and directing growth into those areas, it's taking the, a little bit of the, it's releasing the pressure valve, so to speak, on developing the remaining 2% of our land that is either not developed or not preserved, that is mostly existing in, you know, established neighborhoods. So I think it's, I mean, it's the whole premise of the plan. Did you want to add?
Yeah, just basically, so the plan recognizes that we don't have a whole lot of land left to develop, so it is encouraging that we grow in places where we can redevelop and continue to preserve land that's already in preservation and continue to preserve what we can. And then throughout the plan, the activity centers are referenced throughout the plan. You'll see them referenced, of course, in Chapter 2, which we'll start to talk about a little bit next week. We talk a little bit about strategies and policies for these activity centers in the Economic Prosperity Chapter, and also Dynamic Neighborhoods primarily.
I'm trying to find the chart with the little circles, right? Is that, that's what you're talking about, where the activity centers are denoted?
Yes, I know what you're talking about, but that's not actually in the plan.
Yeah, but that'll be in our presentation next week.
Okay. But, but for example, if I was reading whatever I saw right, Historic Elk Ridge is not, is not, does not have a little circle on it.
No, I believe that's, I think it's a historic community, right? Yeah. It's a historic community, it's under areas to preserve.
Yeah, that was one of the changes that we made throughout the process. I don't recall if it started out initially, no, it always was a historic.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to remember if in the very beginning we identified, in one of the earlier iterations of the Future Land Use Map, did we ever not call it historic community? And I think it was a request by a member of the public to, that it should be a historic community.
Okay. But, or for example, if I'm looking at the Future Land Use Map, and I look at Route 40, I mean, there, you know, there's four, six, seven different colors along the stretch of what's now called Creanway, like, it, that's, the plan is to have those four or five different uses along a two-mile stretch? That's-
I think most of, and Sarah, feel free to jump in, I think most of the color, the various colors and shades that you'll see on Route 40 are what's, is basically representative of its existing character, right?
I totally agree. So where is the redevelopment plan for quarters like that?
So the, the red activity centers are the, would be the areas that would redevelop or transform.
Okay. Are there red activity centers in that map I can't find on Route 40?
Oh, there are. There are three on Route 40.
Okay. Okay. All right, I guess I'm not-
They're the, those, those three areas that were identified on Route 40 were the same ones as identified in Plan Howard 2030.
Oh, that's reassuring.
Weren't they?
Super reassuring.
Oh, the whole corridor was in Route, okay.
It was the whole corridor.
Were you about to say something?
Though, okay, I, yeah, slight nuance. The whole corridor was identified, but there was the three, the TND zoning districts that had the ability to do the higher-density mixed-use zoning. Those are the three areas of the activity centers.
TND?
That was, what was the, the Normandy zoning designation?
TNC.
TNC.
Traditional Neighborhood Center.
Thank you.
Oh, these categories that are in the-
Correct. It's the T, the Traditional Neighborhood Center zoning designation.
Yeah, it was Norm, it was Normandy, it was Chatham, Chatham Mall. Well, it's not Chatham Mall anymore. Chatham Station? Yeah. And I don't know what the third one was, on Route 40.
Pine Orchard Liquors?
Enchanted Forest.
Enchanted Forest, yeah.
Where?
Enchanted Forest.
Oh, the Enchanted Forest.
Oh, that one makes sense.
Just 'cause they have the big-
You're right.
Just 'cause they have the big parking lots, I think.
Right. Exactly. Okay.
Thank you for reminding us of the challenges of, we can plan, but we also require private industry to act.
Exactly.
My question was, I had a question about equity in action. The principles listed on Chapter 15, one of them, I think it's number four, it says, "Plan for a jobs and housing balance." I was wondering if you could explain how this specifically relates to equity in action and why this is an important consideration as we go through this plan?
So that was specifically something that came out of APA. So I think the idea behind that-
American Planning Association?
Yes, American Planning Association. Thank you. So that, I believe, so that was, that was specifically something that came from the, thank you, American Planning Association- thank you, American Planning Association. I think the idea is, is that we want to try to ensure that we have housing that is appropriate for the types of jobs that we also, for the types of jobs and the incomes that people will make within the county. And it's important to, and I think a lot of this comes to a lot of the, kind of the supply and demand sort of argument. It's, oh, well, if you have enough of supply, right? If you can somehow try to level out your supply and your demand, then housing prices may not, you know, sort of spiral out of control. So then that just sort of creates more naturally kind of affordable housing via just having a more manageable market.
So just to get a little wonky, what we typically look at is, for every 100 jobs, 70 homes. So like a 70 to 100 ratio. And that's how we derive some of our job and housing targets. And that's what RCLCO looked at to try to derive the targets, the 59,000 and then 30,000 homes.
The 100 to 70, is that a number specific, like, specific to Howard County that we utilized? Or is it one that comes from APA or elsewhere as a general guidance?
It's more just industry guidance. Does it come, I don't know if it's specific to APA, but it's just kind of an industry guidance, yeah. What RCLCO, our economic advisors were using.
Okay. And I know we're going to get into jobs and housing balance later. I just, specifically as equity action planning for jobs and housing balance, I thought it was interesting that it was specifically called out. Thank you for explaining it more. Ms. Young?
Going back to apartments. So we keep hearing from the housing advocates that there's a need for 5,000 apartments. And pretty much all we've had built, I guess, in the last three or four years are luxury apartments. And I'm wondering if you have done, if it's contained in here. It might be in an appendix. I have not read through all the appendices. How many luxury apartments versus regular old apartments? And I'm not even sure what a regular old apartment is anymore in Howard County. Is that an apartment that rents for $1,500 to $2,000 a month? And a luxury apartment is over $2,000? I don't know. And I guess it's a bunch of questions then. Do you have categories like that? And assuming that we do have almost all luxury apartments that are being proposed to be built in Howard County right now, and the only way then to obtain the 5,000 low-to-moderate-income apartments that we would need would be through our MIHU program, that means we would need 50,000 units built to get those 5,000 apartments that were low and moderate income. If it was 10%. If it was 15%, we would only need, what, 42,000? It would be significantly less.
I think that number comes from the, is that the most recent rental housing report that was done?
Yes, I know, that number actually, we've been hearing since we were elected, since we were all elected more than four years ago. So, yeah, that number has been really consistent for quite some time. I think that's the number of people who are on the waiting list for low- and moderate-income housing. Well, they got rid of the waiting list because they recognized that it was impossible to take people off the waiting list. They didn't want them to feel like they were on a waiting list that they're never going to get off of. So how do we, I mean, there's so much of an emphasis on equity, and equity in housing in everything that you have said so far. How do you honestly, really get there, given the trends that we're seeing right now?
Yeah, and I think we're going to get into many of those questions when the Dynamic Neighborhoods chapter is presented, because.
And we can hold off till then.
We did take quite a bit of lead from the Housing Opportunity Master Plan. And even in our most recent versions, some of the changes that we did make was to incorporate more targets from the Housing Opportunities Master Plan and some more specific policy recommendations.
I'm fine with that answer. I'm fine with that answer. I'm waiting until we get to that chapter, yeah. I'm fine with that.
Mr. Youngman?
Somebody asked me an interesting question a couple of weeks ago. And it was, it was great, because it was just sort of this, like, naive, like, way step-back question. And they said, "So why do you need to grow at all?" And of course, you know, my response was, "Well, how much taxes do you want to pay, right?" But then, you know, you look at, you look at the fiscal analysis, and I remember we looked at this a year ago when we first saw that. You know, out in year 18, the total net profit on all this growth is $96 million a year. It's not that much. You know, and if you, assuming there's no commercial tax base at all and just divide that straight by, what, 120,000 residences or so, it's like 800 bucks a household. So it's a lot of brain damage for, I'm not sure, for how much gain. Is, it seemed like a naive question, but it's an interesting question to sort of ponder. Is there a good answer to that?
Well, we are going to go into the fiscal next week when Jeff Brownow is here. He is going to go into the fiscal impact analysis, but.
I mean, I know.
I think you would feel it if you, if you weren't getting those revenues in. I mean, it certainly, you know, the Spending Affordability Committee did look at the entire fiscal analysis.
Well, you'd have to raise taxes. I mean, I think we all know you have to raise taxes.
Right, you would, you wouldn't be able to maintain the current service levels, but for it.
But it's just an interesting sort of, take a step back, and there's all this, like, just this basic assumption or given that you have to grow, and it's, and it's just this, the only thing we're talking about is how much to grow and where to grow and how to grow, all that. But, you know, when you look at the big picture of Howard County and you look at the next 20 years of growth, you know, sort of the net profit on the growth is not that much. It's really not. So just something to ponder. Thanks.
Dr. Jones?
Yep. I don't have any more questions on Chapter 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh?
I'll ask my question, and if it's a later chapter, tell me. But I think I understand the general concept is refining what was in place by Plan Howard 2030 in terms of the designated uses. Are we, in this design, Hoco by Design, adopting those same kind of established communities, those four, whatever categories of, that were relied upon in the Plan Howard? Or we have new concepts?
Those are replaced by the 18-character areas.
By the 18-character areas?
Yes, hence more specificity and predictability.
Okay. Okay. And so what chapter is that? Or that's all chapters?
So the Future Land Use Map and the Character Areas are introduced and highlighted in Chapter 2. So we'll be here next week to talk about those. The Technical Appendix B is what has all the character area descriptions in more detail.
Oh, okay, I read that. Okay. So not, and what about tiers? Tiers are gone? Are tiers still a thing?
Tiers are the same.
But I thought the state, I thought the state, no?
The tiers map is the same.
Oh, I thought. For some reason, I thought the tiers went away by something that happened at the state level. Okay, well, I'm glad I asked. Okay.
This is more for Mr. Youngman. But it really, it depends on the kind of community you want to have. If you want to make sure that there is space so that young people can come back and purchase a home here, that older people can stay, they can meet those tax burdens, we have a choice where we could figure out if we want to become the kind of place where adults with disabilities have units available to them so they can stay near their families and caretakers. If we want to be able to fund blueprint and do non-mandated things like music and liaisons and mental health workers. And I think the answer to your person's question is it depends on the kind of future we want to have as a community.
I agree with you. But as we saw in action on Monday night, from opposition to a change, from a big neighborhood that was, they weren't there when that very neighborhood was heavily opposed, I think most people want to live in a community that looks like what they see out their front door right now.
Right, I think, I think people are not thinking.
Sort of, I mean, there might be a small amount.
About the future in that way, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I think that most people, you know, are kind of like, hey, I moved here, I like it, and I'm cool if it stays that way. So that.
But it can't stay that way. It's a false premise, because everything changes. It can't really stay. Even if you do nothing, change nothing, it can't.
I'm not advocating for no growth.
No, I know.
I was just more commenting that it, that half of what we do is managing this.
Change, is manage change.
That is growth and subdivision and all the stuff we do.
Yeah.
And like, now that we've fully loaded the costs, hopefully, we've fully loaded the costs, it's just not, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work for not a ton of gain. Except for maybe the qualitative gains that you feel are because we want to have.
I don't think they're qualitative, because I think you look at places like San Francisco that are of the, like, change nothing, don't allow. And what, and you see the problems that they result for workforce challenges, for land, housing challenges. It's, I think you're right in that we are in unique positions where we are forced to think about the future and the impact of our actions on the future every single week. And most people in the county aren't thinking about that. But I, I mean, it is a very meaningful thought exercise to do with people. I think it's worth our time. The only other thing I had to add, sort of, I guess, from Mr. Newscaster and also Ms. Young, because Savage has a lot of missing middle housing. We have duplexes, we have quads, we have septuplets. But we have a lot of unique housing types in Savage. For the duplexes, most of those are separately owned, so people own each side. There are also instances where people purchase the building and then rent out the units within the building that they live in, and that helps them afford their own mortgage payments. So I, I'm most familiar with the missing middle housing in Savage, but because that's the most missing middle housing of all the areas in my district. There's some duplexes in Owen Brown, but I think that's it otherwise. But usually, there's a mix, and it's predominantly ownership in Savage, except for the ones that go to, like, seven units, and those have more renters in them. But I also think that the more renters we help stabilize, the more future homeowners we create. Because if you're spending, you know, only 30% of your income on rent, then you're actually hopefully able to save versus if you're spending 50%. So the answer to your question is, it depends.
Ms. Young?
I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Youngman?
Dr. Jones? All right, Ms. Walsh?
I have one.
Okay.
Is this the last session that we will have you, Director Gallin? Are you hoping to be back next week?
I'll be here next week.
Okay. I'm delighted to hear that.
She'll be here all week and next. Well, this brings this evening to a close. Is there anything else from DPZ that you'd like to share about the introduction? All right.
No, thank you.
Well, thank you all very much, and I look forward to next week's conversation.